Kansas City, fifteen points.
Shallow road, non-destructive. I think Kansas City destroys.
All right.
That defense tough.
Okay, we're gonna call this January third Board Supervisor meeting order. And Janice, you mind letting Craig give our information?
I have a question for something.
Janice may have been wanting to do it.
Janice, you remind me, per request, that lead.
Father, we're grateful for an opportunity again to come before you to acknowledge your presence here with us today. But thank you, Lord, for the skills, the abilities, Father, the sacrifices that are made by these gentlemen. Father, thank you for their willingness to serve this community. Father, thank you so much for the opportunity that you give us as citizens of this country, Lord, to participate in our government. Father, we need your, we need your help with that. Father, we want to do that right. We want to do that in accordance with your will, in a way that pleases you, Father, that the discussions, the things that are said and done here today would be pleasing to you. Father, I pray for our community. Thank you for protecting us, providing for us, giving us men and women who serve us every day, who sacrifice their time, effort, energy, Lord, even their own personal safety, so that we might be able to do what you called us to do. We're so thankful to you for that privilege, Lord, and we don't take it for granted. In Jesus' name we pray.
Great.
All right. Do we have a public comment? Okay, we're gonna call our planning commission meeting order. And first off, we have minutes.
Some move to approve?
Say.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, all in favor say aye. Aye, 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 old business?
There is no old business.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
New considerations.
All right, the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Kenneth and Sheila Jenkins at 110 Mountain View Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to place a new thirty-two-by-seventy manufactured home on this property. It's located on the southeast corner of Mountain View Road and Ashley Road. This is a five-acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. They're saying that the home will have a brick skirting and will have professionally-built front and back porches. This is a view of that property as you come in there on Mountain View. And then these are surrounding properties. Mountain View is a private road, and it's in what we know is Indian Mound subdivision. The Jenkins are here today if you have any questions for them.
They purchased this back in two thousand and fifteen. They live in Crossgate. Want to move out to the country. And in two thousand and seventeen, this thirty, it was a thirty-acre block on this deal. And it was purchased by some guy back in ninety-seven from Pete and Kenneth. And this, the deal was they had to put their own driveway in. And it got rezoned in two thousand and seventeen without them knowing that, the Jenkins. Because it was tied in with the Indian Mound portion. And when they, when Indian Mounds got rezoned, that thirty acres was supposed to be excluded out of that. Because they had their own road. It was, what was it, agriculture A1?
I believe it was ag before it changed, but it was, it was.
The rezoning is...
Is there R1 now?
But it, that was done during the comp zoning update.
That's correct. Yeah, so if you recall, the situation out at Indian Mound was a, you know, it's a development that came online back in the nineties, really at a point in time when the board was starting to become more involved in the development activity and getting on top of it. But it did predate zoning. And so what we discovered was after Indian Mound developed out as a somewhat of a more classic subdivision, although it still has issues that we're dealing with even today. Once it started developing into a more standard-oriented subdivision, we discovered the zoning's not right for a subdivision. And so in seventeen, the effort was made to try to get it into compliance with the zoning. And so this is an example of a parcel that's an outlier parcel, it's on the very far edge of Indian Mound. It's separated away from most of the development activity. It developed differently than the other areas within Indian Mound. And so Mountain View, as you saw from the photographs, has manufactured housing that's already on it. And so it's, it's kind of a different visual there. It appears to me that it's separated enough from Indian Mound that you're not gonna run into an issue where, you know, the larger lots and larger homes that have already developed inside what we know to be Indian Mound are gonna be impacted. We've also encouraged the applicant to poll the neighbors and just make sure that there's, you know, a good sense of what's being done here, that what they're proposing is gonna be in conformity with what's there in the immediate vicinity. Okay, so y'all, y'all will act on this on the fourteenth of February. You're not being asked to make any sort of decision today.
Well, we're setting a public hearing.
Are we setting a public hearing?
As the planning commission, you're gonna set it, then you're gonna set it again on Monday as the Board of Supervisors.
So I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion set to public.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye, aye.
Can I ask a question before we go to the next one? That pertains to these big lots like we're talking about. I think I've talked briefly with Dave and others some. When we have lots that are, and I don't know what the magic number is, let's say it's fifteen acres, or twelve, or twenty. Is there a way that we can leave that zoned agriculture, even, I mean, if you have a piece that's two hundred acres and somebody busts it up into ten, twenty-acre lots, I know they have subdivided it, but most of the time, if somebody has twenty acres, they're gonna have a horse, or cow, or they show sheep, or, and they would want their land to stay the same agriculture. Is there a way, and I guess Dave is who has to answer that, that we can have many agriculture or to keep that agriculture raiding, zoning, and not have to go to a residential? Because that's similar to what we have here.
Right, the, keep in mind, the RE1 zone does allow the horticulture and agricultural uses such as horses.
Right, right.
It doesn't allow the more intensive, you know, chicken houses and that type of thing.
That's not what, I don't think we've moved on.
I believe, if you can research and correct me if I'm wrong, I think Indian Mound, they requested to be rezoned RE1, I believe.
Well, yes.
Something, it's kinda like somebody being, um, given an opportunity to resign. So, yeah, so they requested to be rezoned, but it was because it was, in fact, a subdivision at that point in time.
Correct.
And we had to address the fact that it was a subdivision. So let me, I'm looking at Renee because I want to clarify something. We have a RE1A context, I don't believe we allow subdivisions in RE1A, do we, Renee?
Only minor and major, which, you know, there is, there is something for a minor, I think, with four.
It's like only four lots or five lots?
Four or less, I think, is what it is.
I think what Steve's getting at is some type of zoning context that would allow us to classify, I call them rural subdivisions, Steve. This, just off the top of my head, is a way to sort of distinguish that context from normal subdivision, or what I'm saying, normal subdivision, I'm talking about things like the subdivision I live in, which has fifty lots, and they're a quarter to a third of an acre. Most of the time, when we talk about subdivisions, that's what's in the mind of folks. And so when they just simply subdivide their property, and it's a larger acreage, thirty acres, and they divide it three times, it's, it's hard to, for them to understand how that could possibly be classified like a fifty-lot subdivision development.
Well, I mean, the thing, they have to come in and ask for permission. If we go to RE1 or whatever, and they want to have a show calf, and they got fifteen acres. And very few people by fifteen acres that don't have some type of agriculture in mind. And, I mean, I understand that, I would want it to be that if you fit in this category, there's no further subdivision. We don't want to get caught in that, where they get it and then they start splitting it up. And, and some other things, mobile homes maybe excluded on many farm, you know, on these type things. But we've been kind of toying this for, for the last four years.
Well, and that's what we attempted to address back in seventeen with the major and minor subdivisions. Because, keep in mind, if it were zoned, agriculture cannot, you can't have a subdivision in an ag zone.
That's correct.
So you had to create a mechanism to allow for that, and that's why we have the RE1 and the RE1A. But we did try to differentiate between the major and minor subdivisions to handle some of that, recognizing there is a need for large lot.
Under RE1A, can you have a show calf? That's okay?
Yeah, RE1A.
You can have horses and...
On RE1A?
I think you can have it in RE1 as well.
You can, you can.
On RE1?
Yes.
I believe that's correct.
Because those are larger lots.
Steve, let, let me interject. The county's, one of the major considerations that the county has is not just the subdividing activity, not really even the use of the property, it's the access. And that is, that's the crux of the discussion right there. So what we often find is that we can satisfy the desire to want to have a larger lot kind of area and development, no problem, fifteen acres, no further subdividing, you can have your livestock and farm animals and stuff like that, and that's not an issue. But when they want to start getting off of the public road and accessing these parcels by a pig trail or a glorified driveway, and you've got five, six, eight, twelve of these larger lots that are being served by a substandard road, then you've got Indian Mound all over again. And so as a part of addressing this...
I would not want, I wouldn't want to bother that.
That's where the problem comes in, though.
I mean, my thing is if you have a hundred acres, and you've got road frontage enough for a quarter of a mile or something, or whatever, and you can do, whether it's five, twenty-acre lots, or six, or what, fifteen, or whatever, do we have to rezone it from agriculture because it's still gonna be agriculture?
Presently, yes, sir.
Okay.
Because it, it carries with it activity that triggers our zoning.
The problem that I...
That first act of subdividing.
The real problem, the whole thing, is just what, to me, what Craig's saying. I mean, if they got road frontage, they can access it, and I understand that. The problem is, a guy buys a hundred and fifty acres back here, or fifty acres, and he's gotta build a full-blown road to get to his property back there. And I don't know the solution to that, but I got those situations, and the guy wants to sell it, or he wants to, somebody wants to buy that and split that in two, twenty-five acres, and that's all it'll be, but to get to it is a half a mile, three-quarter mile, he has to build a full road, cannot begin to afford to.
This is where we've kind of gotten around it, it's with our, you know, with our methods that we use, the restrictive covenant method, Steve, where we say, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna require rezoning if it's gonna be two lots, and you're agreeing on the front end, it won't be further subdivided. And we understand that, you know, it's a private means of access, it'll always be, it won't, it will never be accepted for public maintenance. You can't backdoor us by running to the school district and creating a school bus turnaround. There's lots of protections that we build in that keep the applicant from having to actually go through a rezoning. We've done that a number of times, and so we know how to do that. But, but we don't have anything right now in our zoning that would just provide for that process on the front end and just go ahead and address it. But there's so many different considerations that come into play, it's hard to build a zoning structure that accounts for every conceivable request, you just can't, you can't. A hundred acres, it's all got public road frontage? It has the potential to be developed essentially irrespective of zoning, because it can be broken up where there is not an issue of access.
But when you go, you can't, they can't buy that pig.
When they leave that public road, that's where you got a problem.
Just have some standard, whether it be gravel, whatever, some standard, that's the problem.
And here's the point. You leave the zoning, when you start talking about access, you leave the zoning, and you go over to the development ordinance. And the development ordinance says, "We don't have gravel roads." The development ordinance says sixty feet of rideaway, so much black base, so much surface course. I mean, it's very intense in terms of those regulations, because we all know that when you've, when you build a road to that standard, you're gonna want the county to maintain it. And we're fine to do that as long as it meets our standard on the front end.
What if...
Hey, y'all, let's just talk about this another day.
Yeah, my question was not anything at all to do with roads. Mine was, where road, land has road frontage, and I'll get with Dave, and we'll see.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve. Next item?
It's a conditional use permit for Deborah and Robert Smith at 540 Highway 468. The Smiths are seeking a conditional use permit to place a brand-new double-wide home on this property. It's located on the west side of Highway 468. The property, let's see, is a one-point-one-four-acre parcel, it's zoned RE1A. So mobile homes are allowed in the RE1A as a conditional use. There has previously been a home on this property in the past, but it was removed. This home will be placed in the same location as that mobile home that was there. And this is where the house, the mobile home will be going. That's, there's an existing home on the property that Mrs. Smith has lived in for fifty-six years. They plan to tear it down, but after they get into the new home. This is a view of that property out on 468.
That's the house that's gonna be torn down?
That's the house that, yeah, yes, sir.
Not, not that one?
Not that one, but I can't, my thing messed up. Yeah, the new mobile home, I think, is going to go somewhere right out in here. And then the house will be torn down.
Where's the house?
Right there.
It's that one, but...
That's it?
That's it.
That one.
Okay.
I'm not sure if anybody's here today or not for any questions. Okay, so I don't know if you have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, you don't plan on having someone live in both dwellings at the same time, right?
Once we get the buffalo moved in, we can move out and have stayed in the buffalo, have a house for them.
Okay.
And then these are surrounding properties. That's it.
So are we, there's no posting of the property?
We've posted it, and the notice has been published in the paper, but now we're just setting the hearing date today.
Setting, yeah.
The public hearing date.
Have you got any calls?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten any calls, now, we did ask them to try to get something from the property owners surrounding them, just stating that they weren't opposed to the manufactured home. I think that they're working on that, but we haven't gotten anything back.
Tradition's already been started, well, maybe with, some's already called.
Aye, Brad?
That's a motion.
Set it.
Set it for a hearing, second.
Motion by Brad, taken by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, aye, aye.
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Matt Jones at 601 Bethel Road. Mr. Jones is seeking the conditional use permit to operate an event, an entertainment venue, in an existing cabin, lodge-style-type home. The property is located on the east side of Bethel Road. It's a fourteen-acre parcel, it's zoned A1. That's an aerial view. This is his site plan, you can see the existing home here. And it's a three-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot home, it has four covered porches, decks, and patio. The parking area now is gravel, he shows it here. Gravel, and I think some, maybe crushed limestone. And this is a view of that home there. And the property. He also has property across the street. Now, this property is part of a two-hundred-acre family farm that's located out on Bethel Road. And he wants to, in the future, add some additional gravel parking across the street in the event that overflow parking would be needed there. So these are surrounding properties. And I believe these are all probably relatives, but he's here today if y'all have questions for him.
I know him and his family is gonna be doing right.
Yeah, I want to say the same thing on that. I've known Matt for, I don't even want to put years on the number because it makes me feel pretty bad. He grew up on West Lake, which, if that goes in anybody's cold sweat, chill, or mine, that's in Mill Creek, where the creek was, right there. So, and they're, they're a top-notch family and group, and if he tells you he's gonna do something, he, he's gonna do it, so. I agree with you.
Make a motion, set to public.
I didn't want to put years on it either, so.
Make a motion, set to public hearing.
Second.
But, motion by Jared, taken by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Site plan?
We don't have any site plan reviews today.
Nuisance.
Gentlemen, item six on the planning commission agenda is a nuisance property consideration. This will be the Patricia Chapman nuisance property at 111 Susan Street. This is a District One parcel. We'll open that public hearing. I will ask for Ms. Chapman, or anyone on behalf of Ms. Chapman who intends to speak, to come forward at this time. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
Okay, so these pictures were taken August the fifth of two thousand and nineteen. We had received a complaint about the grass and weeds, rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles and appliances. The certified mail was not received at that time. They have contacted us, and I think that the notes say that they did make some progress, but that, you know, it has gone back and may be even worse now than it was previously.
Have you more current period of time?
These were taken yesterday, or the day before.
All right, I guess tell me what, what your plan is.
Well, the camper that was on the other side. Right there, that's got the blue tarp on the front of it.
Right.
It's gone, we tore it down. The, one at the end of the trailer is in progress of being tore down. So it's at the other end.
Maybe we can't see it, I don't know.
And it's over, it's almost tore down. All we have now, as far as the camper and that trailer, are the bases, the trailers. They just need to be pulled off, and one of the vehicles, for the people who are doing this work for us, we told them that they could just have the vehicle that's covered with the blue tarp right there, they could just, they could take that along with it. Mainly, it does look worse than it did, because we're tearing down those two buildings.
Right.
And this month, it's just been so wet, we can't do much out there, because every time we take a step, we sink a foot. And it's just, it's getting done.
Right. How long have we, how long have we had this?
We actually had this in the past as well. But I guess we've been working this now since August the fifth of nineteen.
Let me, I don't want to explain to you, just try to let everybody know this, this is not something we ride around looking for. People in the neighborhood, people whatever, and you may have one next door to you that looks just as bad. But until somebody makes a report on it, and it's kind of like the Sheriff's Department, they get a report, they have to look into it. And that's what our people do. And so I'm just letting you know, it was not something that I or we have anybody ride around looking for. But that's the way it comes. But what, what we normally, normally will do, and what we'll do on this one, we...
See, all that that's piled up now is just from what we're tearing down to get rid of. And...
If you were, if you were to say, how long you think it'd take you to get the rest of it cleaned up, what would you think?
Depends on the weather.
Well, okay, right.
We've got a dumpster that we had dropped at the back.
Okay.
And it's probably, I guess, about half-full. But we started cleaning up and everything, like I said, we had the dumpster dropped off there so we could use it.
Right.
And...
Let's just, to speed it up, let's just say you had perfect weather. How long you think it'd take you to clean it up? If the weather was dried up, you could, you could rock and roll.
Couple of months.
All right.
I've also, you know, like I said, we still, we've got that one pickup truck. We've got somebody that's interested in it, and all they have to do is come and pick it up.
What I think, what I think, what I think we'd like to do, and I'm gonna tell you this, because we're not...
See, all that, it didn't look like that, believe me, a couple of days, a few days ago, because everything that you see in there was in the camper and the other storage building.
Right. I agree, I understand, what I'm getting at, what we'll do here, I think I'm on, we'll declare the nuisance. And, and the reason we will do that is that way we don't have to start this all over again. But this still give you, will delay everything and give you time to get it cleaned up. But this way, we don't have to, if, if you don't, we don't have to start the process all over again, so.
So our meeting in April should be ample time to, giving them over two months?
Yeah, April, and I mean, and if you've made significant progress, and you need a little more, I'm gonna help you there too. As long as you're making significant progress, you know. So I think that's the way, and don't, don't, just because we're declaring a nuisance, I want you to understand, is not immediately going to the court.
Yes, sir.
It, it's just to keep us from having to start this all over again.
But if come April, it's not cleaned up, you do go on up to this?
Yeah, that, that is...
Don't want to do that.
Good deal.
No, that's what I'm saying, so that way, all we gotta do is say, we didn't get done, we gave them this period of time, so now we move on. But there again, like I said, if you don't like for a little bit, we're gonna, I'm gonna work with you some on it. But, but you need to, April should give you, I mean, we should have dry weather, March and April, so, I mean, so hopefully.
Yes, sir, hopefully.
And I, but I do, I mean, look, I understand the weather, so I said, I'm, we're trying to work with you, so, anyway. Right now, I'd like, I'm going to declare the nuisance, and we're gonna work it just like that, and our people will monitor things, and we'll, you'll have these till through into April. And then we'll, we'll, they'll look at it and report back, and they may think you've got everything, they're gonna tell you, you need to do a little more, or everything looks good. Okay, is that fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you mind giving your name and address for record?
James Robert Lee, 111 Susan Street, Florence, Mississippi, 39073.
Right, all right, okay. But that's what I want, I'm, I'm clear to make most, declare this a nuisance, and we'll give them time to work with it.
All right, motion by Jared, taken by Steve, any discussion?
All right, all right, thank y'all, thank you.
All opposed, ayes aye.
For the record, that public hearing's closed.
All right, we have motion adjourned until the twenty-seventh of February?
Some move.
Motion by Jared, second, second by Daniel, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Now we are back in our Board Supervisor meeting. First up, we have Ken Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item that we have on the agenda this morning is the Mill Creek Bank Protection Project. This is the project that is partially funded through NRCS, seventy-five twenty-five. We're recommending award to MEMS Inc. in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars, and authorize the Board President to execute the contract documents.
Yep, some move.
Motion by Daniel, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was kinda like Mr. Buster on steroids, wasn't it? I mean, just.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Buster's easier to understand, but that was faster, you know what I'm saying?
Basically, I wanna talk to y'all about the monster truck. If we're gonna do it, we'll have to proceed forward with it to get it in in the time period. On that, we talked about it.
And we're gonna buy it out of the bond fund? Correct?
It's equipment.
Yeah.
It's eligible.
Y'all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
I guess.
I am.
All right, have a motion.
I got it.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes aye.
Thank you. Uh, wanna give you a quick rundown. We've been doing utility inspections this week, got started on that. So far, everything's going good. We hadn't had no problems with the contractors. Everybody's agreed to our program. They're going by the rules that we have set, and we've been inspecting, so we hadn't had no issues yet.
And that, and that's ceasefire, right?
A ceasefire, AT&amp;T, we're starting a new contractor today.
So we're all moving up and, up and running again.
Yeah. Nobody's had any, any problem with what we're, what we put out there for them to do, you know.
Who's doing inspecting?
I've got a guy inside the road department right now that's doing it, Steve, until I get my part-time guys going on that. So as soon as we get our part-time guys going, we'll get that in place. But just wanna let y'all know everything was going good on that, and we're just, I'll bring some new ones in, probably on the 15th, some permits to get approved. But right now, we wanted to kinda get started back where we was and to work on it before you shut down. Get everybody on track before we start turning this new corner.
Thanks.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, first item under my section is a discussion of a proposed ordinance that would prohibit possession and consumption of alternative nicotine products and electronic cigarettes by minors. Standing with me right here is the primary, primary author of this proposed ordinance, and I would say the sheriff's point person on dealing with this particular issue that has gotten a good bit of publicity, and rightfully so, because we've had a number of incidents right here in Rankin County involving especially minor kids who've gotten hold of these e-cigarettes and have had, on occasion, have had some really bad results, some serious lung injuries. And they have had deaths across the country. Attached to the agenda today for your consideration is a copy of the proposed ordinance that would prohibit the possession and consumption of these alternative nicotine products and e-cigarettes by minors. I know Paul has had some good interaction with the Rankin County School District, and so I'm gonna let Paul discuss with you the subject matter. And if you have any questions, I'm confident that Paul will be able to answer those as well.
How's that verse set up?
That sounds great. Morning.
Uh, I guess it was back in November, the sheriff came to me and said that Flowood Police Chief had called a meeting of all the county police chiefs, youth courts, youth court judge, prosecutor, everybody, and some school officials came together to start looking at an ordinance. Sheriff volunteered me to start drafting these ordinances. Got together with Martin Baker. We worked on an ordinance that has already been passed in Brandon, Flowood, Florence. The school district, I've spoken at length with Chad Calender, Dr. Townsend. They're gonna go with whatever you all approve. I have submitted this to them. They are, they are in favor of it. Have had it for some time, but I decided to make some changes after speaking with Craig. In December, y'all may know, President Trump signed a bill making, raising the age, the federal age to buy tobacco and alternative tobacco products to 21. So we went ahead and put this ordinance to, to be in accordance with that new federal law that was signed. As he said, we've had numerous incidents, and I, I think I left my paper. Uh, oh, here it is. Chad Calender gave me a rundown. Again, this is, this was back in October. The 1920 school year vaping incidents, what, where they've confiscated a vape is 164 of them in the Rankin County School District. That was back in October. Last year alone, there were 446 incidents. We've had numerous kids that have passed out. Jamie Stein came to speak to us at that meeting where he had had, I think, two kids last fall that had just dropped. They thought, they were worried they were dead and ended up having to be taken to the hospital with the lung disease that this is causing. So kids are, they're not just using the nicotine, but even the nicotine in high enough doses. It's dangerous to these kids. They're putting, they're selling stuff, they're putting stuff in them, running around campus, these campuses, smoking on them, and I mean, this is just making them ill. So everybody thought it was best to go ahead and start taking action. As I said, other municipalities that are, have already passed ordinances that are very similar to this one right here.
I think it's a good idea. Good idea.
Yeah, that's good. And does the cities have those two following place? Is that right?
Yes.
Cities have picked them up also?
Yeah, I believe, like I said, I think Florence, Florence, Brandon, and Flowood have all three passed. I'm not for sure. I'm not sure about Furl.
I'm not sure about Richland either.
When will this take effect?
I don't know about Richland either. I'm not sure.
It's designed to take effect 30 days after it's published. Okay, so there's a, there's a time window. After you adopt, there'll be a time window for publication. It'll be effective 30 days after the final date of publication.
All right. All motion?
Go ahead, and I'll have some discussion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, so.
Second.
All right, motion by Daniel, second by Jared, discussion?
I have discussion. The intent on this is pretty much vaping, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's moving the age from 18 to 21 to buy cigarettes or any other type device or tobacco, right?
To possess it. So.
Not to buy.
I, I expect that the purchase thereof is about to be changed in accordance with the federal law, this legislative possession, to purchase it. This is just simply to limit the possession of.
Possession.
Correct.
What do we do? And I'm just thinking, like, some of these guys that work construction that are 19, 20 years old that tip scold, and he found a can of scold on them. Pulling over.
It's, I mean, it's, it's about to.
About to change, huh?
It's about to change.
Yeah, one of the scary sides of this deal, this kind of ties into the opioid crisis, one of the things that happens unless it lowers all your respirations and your body output, right? So the counteractive thing that we, that emergency responders have is a drug called Narcan they can push. The problem that's happening to us right now is you have some of these youths that are putting different things, just as Paul mentioned, into this that the Narcan doesn't counteract. So for example, the Narcan brings it back up. It's such a dangerous issue now is when we give Narcan to override the drug that's in them, the Narcan's not working.
Right.
So they stay in those respiratory distress areas and stuff like, so it's very, very dangerous.
Things that are being inhaled.
Yeah.
I watch things.
That are inside these, these cigarettes that they're putting into them.
I'm outside of that.
Oh, yeah. You're going straight nicotine.
I'm just saying, golly, I know I'm gonna catch it.
Red man, yeah.
I'm gonna catch it. These guys that, any of them.
Yeah, I know.
Well, this, this ordinance does not apply to those products either. It's, it lists in here that, that an altern, this is alt, what they're calling alternative nicotine products. This is going to apply to the vape. This is what this ordinance is aimed at. It even states in here that it does not apply to a cigarette or tobacco product defined in the Mississippi Code.
Okay, I've read it wrong. Any other product that consists or contains nicotine that can be ingested into the body by chewing, smoking, absorbing, dissolving, inhaling.
Right. And then it says, alternative nicotine product does not include, and then it's, and that's where.
I had not turned the page. I'm good, I'm good. That lets me off the hook.
If it's fake nicotine, it's covered.
Okay.
If it's tobacco natural, it ain't covered. Cause that's gonna be handled under a separate section.
Yes.
I'm only talking about a very small group.
But the reason I said that it's going to change is because even with your concern, that law is about to change. But that's gonna be handled at the state level.
Okay, good, good.
And I make sure, guys, while we're talking, it applies to anybody's under the age of 21, it applies to possession, and it also applies to school grounds. And I wanna make that clear to you guys that what, what the school district is asking for is that measure of, of an envelope over school district territory as well, so that there's better enforcement mechanisms that they would have available to them. All right? So that's what's going on. The first offense is 50 bucks. Second offense, it ramps up to 250. Third offense, gets uglier from there, I think, at that point. But we hope we can.
It's, it's up to that, and the main thing that they're gonna start introducing is we're working with, I don't know if y'all seen the enrich dot MS, a local Rankin County resident, she found a vape on her son. She started this nonprofit organization. It's blowing up. As a matter of fact, they have a summit next week. The governor's coming to. It's supposed to be a big deal. They're gonna help us get some educational programs to help educate. That's the main thing. It's just gonna be getting them in, like, these miners, getting them in front of Judge Broom. The fine is not so much what we're worried about.
And we've got, and I guess it's a thing, the cities have it now inside those public schools. Like, for example, the city of Flowood Northwest Rankin is already in it. This is just gonna put all of our county schools in it and county itself.
Correct. And, and the school board will be adopting this legislation for, at their next board meeting as well.
Okay, so any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes aye. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Mr. President, if we're ready to move, item B would be a discussion of our 2020 census timeline and other considerations related to the census. And so with us today is our friends at CNPDD, Dave Wade is here. I should, probably should have introduced Mike Monk first since he's the executive director, but I decided to throw a bone to my good friend Dave Wade. I mentioned him before I mentioned Mike. And Jay Wasworth is also here. If you've got questions about the census, now will be the time to ask those questions. But they're gonna come and give us some information for you guys to consider with respect to a timeline. And after they finish with their presentation, I've got one briefing I wanna mention to you about the rest of the story.
Thank you, President.
Good morning.
I know we had some, some questions recently about the upcoming census and the subsequent redistricting that'll take place. I wanted to just get before you, I'm trying to do this with our municipalities as well. The census timeline is in front of you. It's pretty much happening as we speak. Census Day is actually April the 1st, and then there'll be some follow-up beyond that on the non-responses. And then, of course, the release is what we're looking towards. The release has to happen by March 31st of '21. They have to have all the population data back to the states. Last time, I believe we got it in February. I don't remember, it was early or mid. And as soon as we get that data, we'll have some in-house crunching to do on it so we can use it. But following that, we can start the redistricting process, which I know you guys will be interested in. I think most of you have been through redistricting except for maybe Mr. Calhoun. But that's why I, Jay's been through a couple of times. Is it just two?
So I've told you two of them.
Okay.
We blame Jay for everything, no?
Jared was there. Yeah, I was there, too.
That's right. Jared and Jay get the faults.
The second page you'll notice is, I just gave you an outline of what's involved in redistricting. This is just the process of what we go through. Obviously, we did your last several plans. We'll take your existing supervisor districts, overlay the new data on that map to see where we're at in compliance. And of course, the, the main thing being meeting that one person, one vote requirement. It's a 14th Amendment equal protection clause, that we have to balance the population in each district. You're allowed on local levels up to a 10% deviation, what we call top to bottom deviation. So your heaviest populated district and your lightest populated district, when you combine those differences from the ideal population per district, you can have up to 10% deviation. Generally, we try to create a plan that allows for a little growth in the high growth areas, the areas that we know we're gonna continue to gain population, to kinda keep it balanced over the next 10 years. But that, that's kind of the process. There'll be a series of meetings with you guys. We'll sit down with you one or two at a time and just kinda look at your district and where those lines need to meet, need to move, rather. At that time, once we've gotten the baseline, we'll know, for example, you know, how many persons each district needs to either gain or lose, and we'll try to shift those lines accordingly. We always make attempts to keep the lines on something that makes sense. You know, if you'll notice, I think between, between Brad and Steve, the line kinda runs 20 and then jumps on 80. You know, that's ideal. We try to not split neighborhoods to the extent possible. Try to, you know, avoid voter confusion and that kinda thing. And we'll also be doing this on your justice court lines, which I know the judges and constables will be involved in that. And then, of course, following all that, we'll work with you to, to fix your precinct boundaries, to avoid splits and that sort of thing. We, we continue to do that over the years as we make precinct changes and we're inspecting.
Just if we get the legislature to cooperate with us, you know.
Yeah, we can't really control that, but we, we do try to keep the splits to a minimum at all possible. That being said, I've, I've also included, the third page is redistricting guidelines. It's good policy in practice to adopt guiding principles and go, when, when you're going into the process on the front end. Some of them are basic. I mean, they don't really change. Obviously, I taught, the first one is the 10%, 10% deviation. And it's just common sense things. You know, districts have to be contiguous, compact as possible, et cetera. Number seven, of course, we'll keep incumbents in their districts, which is obviously important.
So I can't draw Brad into my district yet?
Probably not. He may not vote for the plan if we do that, so.
I'm pretty sure he won't vote for you.
If he.
Correct.
If he, if he would draw me in his district, I would vote for it.
I'm trying to get drawn in Bishop's district. That's where I wanna go.
That'd be some gerrymandering as far south as Brad is. It'd be kinda difficult. You'll notice number eight and nine, these were two that were added to y'all's guidelines 10 years ago when we did this. And the reason for that was, there's an attorney general's opinion that says we, we're not required to count the prison population.
So we have, we have a fragment facility in Rankin. So we have to address that. Attorney General has given us direction on that. That's what that fragment is there.
Yeah, cause that, that could significantly skew the numbers if you have. I think there's a couple of thousand out there maybe at least. So we put that in your guidelines that we would omit those numbers and make corrections. So when you look at that total population on a redistricting plan, it'll be a little bit lower than the census population because we've removed a couple of thousand probably from the prison. So that, that's the reason for that. Number nine.
Have a lot of turnover.
Just says that we'll address any errors found. And unfortunately, we generally find some errors here and there. Last time, they had the prison in the wrong census block. So it wasn't a big deal because we weren't counting those people, but it was down the road, down 468 in the wrong place. All that being said, I'm gonna give Jay an opportunity if y'all have any questions on the census part. I have given Craig the, the contract for us to go ahead whenever y'all are ready this year and execute that. And of course, it'll include all the things I've discussed. And I know there were some, some census questions on the, the map updates, and that's why I asked Jay to come and, and talk to you about that. If we could get assistance on that, we'll do that as well.
All right. I'm Jay Wasworth. I've worked with Central Planning and Development District as well. And I handle a lot of the census activities that we, we try to keep in touch with census to understand the programs that they have so that we can assist our constituents. And it came up, we heard from Craig, that there's, on an annual basis, census conducts what they call a BAS program. It's a boundary and annexation survey. And what it is, it's your opportunity as a county or a city to take a look at your boundaries, to see if anything's changed. They usually provide a map or a way for you to download the map. And if you have changes to make, you do that through this BAS program. And it's a well-documented program on the census website. And gives you the steps to go through to, to give you an opportunity to make those corrections. And they do that on an annual basis. But the importance of that is that when, when the, when the census is done, any of you as a representative, if you wanna go find out what the population of, let's say, Brandon is, it's gonna return a number to you of the population for Brandon, but it's based on that boundary. So it collected all of the census data that was in that boundary. If that boundary's wrong, you've got the wrong number. Typically, there's not a lot of changes, but when you. So the BAS program is going on right now, there is a deadline of March first to return basically a signature sheet that says we do have changes to make or we don't have changes to make. And once that, that sheet is returned, if there are changes to make, you, you do it through this BAS program. And the deadline for changes to be submitted, I think is sometime in May. And what that will mean, if we get, if, if you have changes, I believe there are changes based on the map that Craig provided, they, they will be reflected in the twenty twenty census when it come, when the data's released, so. And we'll get it, get a chance to do that on an annual basis, so if there's changes next year, this comes around every year, but that's, that's essentially the program, and I think we've agreed to assist Rankin County at some, at some level, we still have to discuss exactly what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jay, give me two seconds here, I want to put a little more meat on that bone for you guys, the, the census folks, the feds, provided us with what they believe to be the appropriate municipal boundaries primarily, that are affected in Rankin County. And so they gave us a diskette that has what they believe to be the appropriate boundaries. I've already asked Lance Cooper in our GS department to look at that detail and to provide any analysis that they have as to whether or not they can see on the front end that there are obvious contradictions there to what we know to be the municipal boundaries primarily. And in fact, we did find some. And so Lance has provided the detail that would be corrective. What I'm asking CNPD D to help us with is to make sure that we communicate those corrections accurately back to census, and that they in fact incorporate the appropriate boundaries, as we say, into their data, so that we don't have that distinction anymore. And so I wanted their help to make sure that we communicated that and documented it properly. The last time we went through this, we did not participate in the boundary discussion, I can't answer as to why, it just didn't happen. And so I believe that some of those current boundaries that they're working from actually are just simply reflective of what they were prior to twenty ten, when we went through this. And so you can imagine over the last couple, over the past ten years, we've had some changes in municipal boundaries. And so we want to, we want to get on top of that and make sure that that's accurate. I don't want municipal populations affected, I don't want county populations affected because of just simple oversight and errors with respect to boundaries. So with your permission, what I'd like to do, and we don't have to do this right now, but what I'd like to do is to have further discussions with CNPD D about that process and, and any costs associated with it, get all that information, and then be prepared to talk to you guys, I don't know if we'll be ready on Monday or not, but within the next couple of meetings, we'll be able to readdress that. Okay?
Thank you. All right, thank y'all for coming today, we'll see you soon, or at least in a year it seems like. All right, next item on our agenda is discussion of food service at multipurpose, y'all still up on it?
At our last discussion, we had gone out for RFP, you guys will recall that we got no responses from any vendors. We have engaged in some communication with the individual that was involved with the prior food service, not the same company, but the individual who was responsible for overseeing that, he was an employee of the prior organization. He's now, according to what I understand, he's got his own company now, and he's providing food vending, and so we just engaged, just to find out is there an opportunity there to continue working with them under the format, the format that we've grown accustomed to and, and are comfortable with. And so that discussion led to some back and forth. In the interim, we've had, basically, we've had a, a stopgap measure in place, we've had some county employees that just took it upon themselves, volunteered their time, their effort, their energy, I think they had some help with families, and they've just been providing limited food service in the interim, and the response that we've gotten from that has been overwhelmingly positive. But let's, let's talk a little bit about some of the structural impediments that we have with respect to this food vending. Number one, this is not like a closed shop situation. When folks come to the multipurpose pavilion for our events, they, they're not, they're not prohibited from bringing their own food, or going and buying their own food elsewhere. So what we find is that the environment does not really promote a, an economically efficient model for somebody to, to want to participate in that. So the competition with respect to local food establishments is really strong, and it's made, it's rendered even more difficult because some of these local establishments are actually delivering to the folks who are attending the multipurpose events. Walk right through the crowd and hand off the pizza that's been ordered, and so it makes pretty difficult, difficult, obviously, in that situation. That's, that's a hurdle that has to be overcome. I'm also given to understand that the, the type of event, and this is information that's coming from Lieutenant Sullivan who oversees this facility on behalf of the county, the type of event really makes a difference in how efficient that food vending operation is. For instance, there are some events that where the, there is not a significant crowd participation, I don't really understand all of this, but there's not anything going on where you have a massive crowd watching the event itself, it's just a whole bunch of participation in the event, and a whole bunch of people who are there, but they may not be, they may not have folks that are actually participating in any given event, so they're not in the crowd, they're back at the trailer working on whatever it is and getting ready for the next event, okay? And so what I'm told is that if it's not an event where you're gonna have a large crowd, you can expect the food sales to be next to nothing. So we've had the, the benefit of having a couple of months here, well, really just about five or six weeks of events, where we can just really watch and see that, how that happens and watch it unfold. And Ken's telling me that even with all of the positive discussion that they've had about this stopgap food, even with that, they're selling on average about thirty hamburgers in a ten hour period. And that's for virtually every event that they've had for the past six weeks. So if, if that's what your food sales looks like, determinate event, you're gonna be really hard pressed to have any sort of meaningful arrangement with a food vendor, you're just gonna be hard pressed, it's hard to gauge. Those two things right there create an, an environment that really challenges us to find a solid, stable food vending organization.
I hate to bring this up, but you know, what about those food trucks?
So, you know, an idea could be that, that you find a way to compete with the local food establishments. You, you have to get competitive with that so that it disincentivizes folks leaving the facility to go find food options. And so I, I don't know what to tell you other than this, we're, we're trying to figure out, why did we get zero participation on the RFP? And it, it appears to me that, that these challenges are, are pretty obvious, they're really obvious. I don't know if you guys want to get into the situation where you're telling your visitors you can't bring in outside food.
No, I don't, I don't want to do that, and I don't want to compete with the local restaurants. If they want to leave and go eat somewhere else, that's probably just less trash you'll have to pick up, and they throw the wrapper on the cream.
Not so many of these restaurants now are doing, bringing orders to you, I heard this on radio just this week, that a lot of your restaurants are actually losing business because they're catering to people on site, so that's basically what's happening, there are two people calling that piece of.
So I mean, our goal is to make sure they have something to eat, not really to make money out of it.
Right. I, I think last month we've made, well, we had a, a higher income, I believe, than we've ever had in, in one month, that we can look back over the records, and that's not on the vending.
That's correct.
Right.
That excludes food service.
I mean, we're not there in business to try to make money off of our food service, I think it's just to.
Convenience.
Yes. So here's where we are today, and, and this is what really needs the discussion, you've got a situation where you have a stopgap in place, but, but that cannot be permanent. And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work our county employee folks who have stepped up and volunteered, we're gonna work them to death, they just can't keep doing this.
Right.
Okay? So we've got to figure out what the answer is, but we need to understand that it's probably not going to be just a run-of-the-mill RFP situation where we say, hey, y'all come and become our food service vendor and knock yourself out, but you have to be here for every single event, fully staffed, whether you're selling three hamburgers or three hundred. That's, that's impossible.
So Craig, the gentleman you spoke with, is he interested in doing it at all, or?
Yeah, he, he did express interest, but I want to, I want to make it clear to you guys that what, what we, what we have heard from our visitors there is it's overpriced and it's not good quality. And my concern, Jay, is that you might change who's, who's, who's ultimately responsible for it, but it's gonna end up being the exact same food, food types, and it's gonna be the exact same pricing model.
Well, if we came up with a number of ones, we expect, every what vendor takes a position as far as providing food, a number yet, each monthly?
Yes, sir. The, the offer on the table at present, if y'all are interested in talking about that, this is, this is still subject to some of the additional discussion, but generally speaking, the proposal is that they'd be willing to pay six hundred dollars a month for the right to occupy the space, and then that would be the sum total of what the county would receive each month.
That'd be it, and they'd do whatever.
Yes, it wouldn't matter if they sold three or three hundred.
Right, yeah.
It's a flat amount each month, and that would be paid to the county for the privilege of being in that space. But you, you guys are gonna have to face the very real prospect that your visitors are gonna be disappointed about that arrangement, okay? Because you're not gonna be able to say, oh, by the way, here's your pricing sheet, this is what you can charge for a hamburger. We can't do that.
Well, you're gonna sell it, they won't sell anything if they don't get the price right.
And therein lies the issue.
Not very often, I mean, it's almost never, but Jay has a pretty good idea. I mean, it's, it, I think we should listen, and then Ken and Mike can tell us later on if that's workable.
Well, I mean, just rather than us, you know, try and find somebody, just put it on the responsibility of the vendor, whoever's booking the shows, let them provide their own food.
If they want food.
Yes, sir.
They can get a vendor, or they can do it themselves.
Understood. So here's the only issue that I have with that, and it's that the food service at present is being operated out of our facility, a, an area of our facility that we control, that we ensure, that we put electricity to, all of that, okay? So I'm, I'm really concerned about some issues, some logistical issues there. If we say, you come in, you run it, then you've got food safety issues, who's gonna be liable if somebody gets sick? They're using our equipment, they're in our facility.
It's no different than any other thing.
I agree, I agree.
No, I'm not thinking to use our facility, I'm thinking they can get a food truck or a, a mobile, that comes in there and sells like they do with all the, the Florence days and Richson deals, come in and sell hamburgers and chicken wings, whatever.
Jay, are you envisioning a situation where, where your, where your event organizer communicates with some local, maybe some local food truck folks?
Bring their own people to do it.
Bring, bring the people in?
Right.
All right, so can we, can we begin that process of discussion now and try to get on top of these issues of, are they gonna be in our facility or not? We need to set some standards in place.
Well, I'm sure they're gonna be in our facility, they gotta have places set up, but what, what is it you're really concerned about? What, the fryers? In which case, it takes fryers out?
Yeah, I, I'm concerned about, I'm, I'm concerned about food safety primarily, and I'm concerned about the fact that they'll be operating out of our facility.
Taking care of it, and we gotta clean it up, I'd like the idea.
It's very hard to segregate that. Once we get into the business of letting them come and use our facility, we have some issues that we need to get on top of, how do we paper that?
They won't take care of it. Why don't we get Ken, Sullivan and Mike, you, maybe one or two of us, Ken and Mike, no, I mean, they can help us a lot and guide us, I mean, we could do something, they already have this building booked for the multipurpose, for this year.
Correct.
We know what big shows are booked, and we know the shows that the vendors really want to come to.
Yes, sir.
And maybe sit down and put, I don't know how many, twelve, sixteen, twenty of our, the shows we know that the vendors want to work, and let them bid, I mean, this is just a thought, Mike and Ken can guide us, let them bid on those shows. And if they want to work smaller ones, fine, but we'll just put it out, these shows will be the ones that we have food available for. And, I mean, that's just a thought, and Ken or Mike may say, oh, no, that won't work, but look, can we just get a little comedian, look at it for a week?
Right. So, talking points for you guys to consider, the, the food service under an arrangement like that, it won't be consistent, from event to event to event, things could change dramatically, and you may have to, to deal with some, some of the, some of the aftermath of that, okay? So keep that in mind, by having a, your own vending that's being offered, you, you have the consistency of that.
When you say your own vending?
What I'm saying, if we have an arrangement with a specific vendor to provide food service, then you've at least got the consistency of that. Yep, so when they show up for that show, they know that there's gonna be food there, and it's gonna be something that they're familiar with, and it's gonna be something that's in keeping with what we've normally provided. By moving to, hey, event organizer, you're responsible, there's, that consistency is gone, that may not be an issue for us, it may be better for us, but I just put that out there as a talking point. Second, what's really interesting about this dynamic, and Ken has really been educating me on it, cuz I didn't, it's not intuitive to me, what we find is that the, it's more beneficial to the county for the shows that have the weakest food sales, we're better off with the events that don't show up big on the food sales, because they have an arrangement with the county that, just from the standpoint of the event, provides more revenue to the county. It's interesting. So the food is actually.
Well, they're using all their money to rent the building, they don't have anything to buy food with.
Yeah, exactly. But that's just been the dynamic that has come, and, you know, Ken's torn between, do I book shows that are gonna increase the food sales, or do I book the shows that we know are gonna provide the better source of revenue and the more stable revenue I would report. I would say, we had a really good month last month, Steve, for case in point, we need to keep following that model, because that's clearly the better position for the county to be in.
Well, you said a whole lot, do you have something in mind that you would throw out there? I mean, other than just, I think the problem with the guys, the vendors, why they don't want to bid, is because we're saying every show.
Yes, sir.
If we were to pull out, I mean, this is just a thought, the big, the twelve, fifteen, I don't know how many, and tell them, y'all bid on these, and you are gonna be required to have these, this menu at these shows, and if you want a show up at a smaller show, you know, you have at it, same, I mean, under one contract. But let them be locked down, knowing they're gonna get these bigger shows. Yeah. But can we just talk to Mike and see?
Yes, sir.
Or, or do you really have any?
Yes, sir. I, I don't have a good feel for this, I would have to defer to Ken and Mike to help me with some of the details, stuff that we're not even thinking about or seeing at this point. I, I'm telling you, Ken, Ken's been able to watch and observe over a number of years, and so he's, he's picked up on things that unless you were there watching and, watching it unfold and talking to folks, you wouldn't know. So I, I think it's invaluable to have both Ken and Mike involved in that discussion. I like the idea of us exploring with those guys, what, what is something we're not thinking about that would work for us? The issue, Steve, of saying, hey, we're gonna give you these ten shows, and we want you to be, that, that will work in the short term, I think, but I don't know that they could ever, we could ever get into a long-term situation, because we won't know what shows are coming next year.
Right.
Until we get over into it. Now, we, we've got some consistency in that, that we could probably predict, but you can't really say for sure that the event that you have in twenty twenty, you're gonna definitely have in twenty twenty one.
Well, if we can't get anybody to come to every one, I don't see another answer, either we do it ourselves, or either we let them bring their own. I mean, there's not much options left.
So, to be continued?
Yeah.
So that's why it was only discussion, I wasn't asking y'all to act on anything. I wasn't asking y'all to act on anything. If y'all will allow us to pass over item D under my section, we'll move on to item E if that works. We're going to put item D on Monday's agenda for discussion. Okay. Item E is a discussion of a proposed 2020 agreement for election services with our circuit clerk, Ms. Boyd. As you guys know, Ms. Becky's here today to help us with this. As you guys know, we have an arrangement with Ms. Becky's, or have had an arrangement with Ms. Becky's office to help us with election support services, and that's been an effective thing for us. We haven't had any issues with the election cycles. We've had good feedback from voters with respect to the way the machines are working, the way the process is working. And so what happens in that situation is that you guys, essentially, you are paying a fee to your circuit clerk for each election and runoff that allows for coverage of the operations of the election. So that's ballot, that's LNA testing, that's getting your machines all ready, that's getting them distributed, that's handling all of the election result responsibility, all of that is handled through the circuit clerk's offices, offloaded it from you guys, and it's been a workable thing for us. So that same arrangement, same pricing is being offered again to the board for this upcoming 2020 election cycle, if you're interested, just a discussion item and to clarify any questions. Ms. Boyd and I have discussed the possibilities that some additional services could be provided as well through the circuit clerk's office. That would be more than what she is committing to do under the arrangement that we have in place now, that you guys are considering today. So I'm ready to discuss that with you, and it has to do with all of the maintenance responsibility with respect to the machines. Okay? So I'm ready to discuss that with you as well. If y'all have any questions about the current agreement, Ms. Boyd's got some information she's going to pass out to you. If you have any questions about the current arrangement, this is the additional. That's right. Yes, I mean, hang on to that for just a second. Y'all have any questions about the current arrangement or thoughts about that?
Yeah, I want to make one comment. I think it's worked really, really well in the last, I guess, two years of elections that we've done. Your office has been outstanding and been extremely professional with people it's called. I'm in favor of it for another reason. I know we want to move it toward our IT department, but our IT department's taking on water and casualties over, I think, we're losing personnel, so I don't know that we're ready to handle this election from our IT department. I know our vision, when we hired it, that's where we wanted to go, but I don't know that we have another choice.
I don't know. Y'all knows my opinion, I don't agree with it, so, you know. I don't think our staff we're paying should be paid extra to come to it, you know, I just don't.
Well, but here's where that...
We have in all these years past, and so I don't know why now it's any different.
So I guess that contradicts our vote we made last time on bumping up $40,000 to other agencies, other groups, departments, on stuff that they were already doing. The difference in this is we're paying a fee to a group to do an additional task.
Well, but what additional task, though? There's not an additional task.
Well, they're doing it, they're doing it, they're doing it.
I think our Secretary of State needs to identify where the responsibilities are in elections. Our election commissioners are not here. I'm sure they're probably going to have, would like to weigh in on some of this, you know?
That would be my question. Have they, are they aware, or have they been, anything discussed with them on the whole thing?
I doubt they're just hitting the ground running.
No, sir, we wanted to talk to you guys first and foremost before we went any farther with any other departments. If y'all were not interested in discussing additional services related to the voting machines, if y'all were not in favor of that arrangement, there was no need to carry that discussion any farther. So we're starting at the top, and then we'll move down the food chain from there.
What are the additional services? Are there additional fees to go with additional services?
Ms. Becky's going to hand out to you, the answer is yes, there would be additional fee for additional services. I don't think I brought them with me, Ms. Laura. Now, I don't know if I want to get into all of that just yet. I know I don't want to get into it, but thank you for having it handy in case I get forced to get into it.
Sullivan and Gable, $40,000 to do stuff that they're already doing anyway, what's the difference?
Let me remind you guys of... Let me walk you guys through, let's talk about where we are first, okay? They're not paying attention.
I am, I'm listening.
I'm listening. Are you listening, Brian?
I'm listening.
So let's talk about where we are, okay? So currently, Ms. Becky's election, the fee associated with her work that is in addition to is because her duties do not include what she is doing for this board.
So what are we currently paying?
Yes, thank you. So right now, we pay on the basis per machine, you are currently paying for 48 precincts, I think it's 48, maybe 49, 48 precincts, two machines per precinct, one to two election poll pads per precinct, or poll, electronic poll books per precinct, and that cost is $100 per voting machine.
Okay, can you give me a total?
So in the neighborhood...
$9,600 for the 48 times two.
Not to exceed 12.5, but it turned out to be $11,300. If you recall, when we entered into our contract with Ms. Becky, we had 50 precincts, and you guys voted to take two of those precincts and consolidate.
There may be some changes coming.
Yes, ma'am? So, yes, sir. So that ended up reducing the, we set a not to exceed of 12.5, but Ms. Becky charges by the precinct, by the item of equipment, and so it fluctuates. That's why we set a not to exceed. So it turned out to be in the neighborhood of about 11.3. Okay? So that would be the current service that is offered through Ms. Becky's office that y'all are charged for per election. That includes the general or the primary and any runoff. Each of those cycles, you've got that cost. Why? Because in every single one of those, we got to roll out the same number of machines, we got to LNA test them all, we got to have ballots for every one of them, whether it's the primary slash general or a runoff, it's exactly the same work. All right? So that's what's happening right now. Does that answer your question, Steve? That's where we are now.
Yeah.
The additional service is being offered, and here are the facts and circumstances that led to this discussion, why are we even having this discussion? You guys recall that there's federal funds available through the HAVA program that our election commissioners have been working to determine what additional items of our election equipment could or can be purchased with the HAVA money. And that process has been undergoing for many months, and we have access to those funds, we've made a submission to the Secretary of State's office for authorization to purchase, and we are getting prepared in the very near future for a purchase of election equipment. The issue is, all of that equipment has to, well, first of all, it has to be ordered correctly. Ms. Becky is offering to see to it that the ordering of the equipment, the securing of the equipment is done as per the state bid law and in conformity with the county's requirements as it relates to purchase. That's number one. And then she's offering to warehouse, keep up with, itemize, take care of the batteries of, see to it that all of that election equipment is kept secure and made ready for the use in the elections. You guys would remain responsible for the cost of anything that has to be done with respect to repair. For instance, if we got to buy new batteries for something, that remains the obligation of the board. Why? Because the board is responsible for the election equipment. Ms. Becky is offering to take, essentially to take on the guardianship responsibility, oversight responsibility. Additionally, anytime there is a request, regardless of where it comes from, to purchase any election equipment, that will go through Ms. Becky. It's not going to be anyone else, who shall remain nameless, promoting the purchase of equipment and then attempting to oversee that as if they and they alone have made that decision and nobody else has been inquired. That process will end, and it will go through Ms. Becky's office, and she will oversee that. We're prepared to talk to you guys. If you look on the bottom of your sheet, you'll see it's an annual charge, not an election charge, I want to clarify that. It's an annual charge of about $5,000 to take on that guardianship responsibility. So she and her staff will be responsible for taking care of every bit of that equipment and the issues associated with it. What we are finding is that occasionally, and this is not blaming anyone or accusing anyone, occasionally what happens, equipment will leave the county facility, it will go out, and when it comes back, we don't have everything. We're missing cords, we're missing chargers, it's disappearing. And there is a very real cost associated with that, and Ms. Becky is saying, you know, that can be better organized, and also some form of accountability can be rendered there. Yes, ma'am. And so, just, Ms. Becky reminded me, but you guys, I think you guys are already aware that we've gotten into a situation where in order to follow our protocols with respect to purchasing, there has to be a requisition for the equipment that's going to be purchased. That's the very first step. It's the request that goes to purchasing that says, here is what we are looking to buy, this is what we need. Okay? That process invariably gets messed up. And so what has happened occasionally is that we have had equipment, the request for equipment has come informally, not through our process, and nobody can take any action on that, and so we, where are we in the process and why has nothing been done? All right, that's one issue. After a requisition is submitted, a purchase order is issued out of purchasing to the vendor. That's a necessary step. The requisition has to be signed by the department head. Is the purchase order have to be signed by the department head? Or just through purchasing? All right. But the requisition's got to be signed, so unfortunately, what has happened when that process has, after the horse is already out of the barn, the process has, we've attempted to reverse that, we have a refusal to sign anything. We want to eliminate all that and shift the purchasing responsibility into Ms. Becky so that there is a good centralized control over that. The election component to this will move through her office.
And I'd like to say, when I was approached about me doing this, it was explained to me that they had two pieces of equipment that needed to be repaired. And this is my understanding, and I may be wrong. The election commissioners did not want to be responsible for taking care of the repairs because they said that they didn't want to be liable for it. So then, I think, the board was contacted, and the board basically said, that's not our responsibility. Then they went to IT, IT said, why should we be doing this? So when I was approached, it was basically, we need somebody that's going to be responsible when the equipment does need to be repaired for signing the purchase orders, getting the requisition, boxing it up. I think our IT department ended up boxing it up, I think. Y'all ended up shipping it. I mean, it was like a great ring circus trying to get it taken care of. So when Craig was talking to me, I mean, the way it was explained to me is that it would just be one person responsible for that rather than everybody trying to decide, well, that's not my responsibility, they ought to do it. And I just was saying, no, that's not my responsibility, they ought to do it.
I ended up signing the requisition for the equipment that had been returned to Hart for repair so that we followed our requisition purchase order being issued the correct format. I'm completely in the dark about what pieces of equipment need to be repaired, when they've been sent back, who they got to go to, and we have more. We have more equipment, is my understanding, that needs to be repaired before the election.
That's not very far.
No, it's not very far off, and so the equipment's just...
And that's fine with me, I promise you, I have no problem. I think, I think the problems with the election commissioners, you have five of them, and trying to get all five people to agree to something. And I think that's why they thought it would be easier to have one person rather than trying to have five people to decide everything.
So there's really two pieces to this. One is the same process that we implemented two years ago.
Can we have a copy of that, tell me what those, what we paid Ms. Becky to do?
Yes. This is the actual bill, this was the proposal, so.
This is the proposal y'all acted on a couple of years ago.
Okay, that was in 2018, that was in 1919. 1919, you just extended this.
Correct.
Well, we've got an election in five weeks.
This was the bill that I sent in because I did not do poll pads, I just didn't have charts for polling.
I think we should do this, and if we want to evaluate it during the middle of the year, but I don't think, I don't think...
So you really have two things that you can talk about today, Steve, that they really are separatable, if you will? The one is the election service that Ms. Becky's done for the last couple of years, whether you want to continue that process. We didn't assume that you wanted to continue that process, so it's before you, today only for discussion, the idea was to put it off Monday, have y'all had a chance to think about it. The second piece of it is this equipment maintenance responsibility, the oversight responsibility.
I think the main thing is that, right now, nobody is responsible for the inventory and the maintenance of the equipment.
The only problems that I had in the last couple of elections, really, I mean, other than we had some problems with the poll people handing out the ballot, but the only other thing I had technical was we didn't have a battery, didn't have a cord, or the battery just didn't work, or something like that. That was the problems, and even though not having a cord or the battery's not there, whatever seems very small, whenever you only have one of them in a precinct, and at seven o'clock in the morning, you have 100 people in line because, and they don't vote with 300 precinct, but they want to vote and go to work, and they can't. I mean, they're held up until somebody runs because we didn't have a good inventory and we didn't maintain our stuff. $5,000 is cheap to me.
And I said, you're welcome to talk with the election commissioners and see, you know, if they want to take on this responsibility.
Where would you store that?
It's, everything is being kept down at, I call it the Marquette Field.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, the poll pads are kept over there in Justice Court, that building there, but then the other machines are kept at the Marquette Field.
Election hasn't...
This doesn't...
We don't have any...
Huge gaps here, you know, that we don't want to have. Handoff who's responsible what, it's like going out, setting them up, delivering all, you know, you fix and get some pushback from the election commissioners, I feel like.
To do this.
I'm sure they'd be glad to get rid of the responsibility of the maintenance of it. I'm talking about the actual run of the election itself, whose responsibilities is it really and truly? But I'd say, again, I'm against making our IT department do this if we're going to pay Ms. Becky extra. So, Ms. Becky, if you're going to run it...
But you're talking about the IT department doing the LNA and stuff like that.
Any of it. I mean, if you're going to get paid for it, you know...
I think the main thing with the LNA testing and everything that goes along with it is that back when the IT department did it, they had six or seven people working in the IT. Now they've got a brand-new guy, one person, and Michelle part-time. So I think that that's the reason why, you know, IT can no longer handle it, is because their new guy has, who's never, ever worked in the election before. And the other four-time guy that's there, he has helped with it, but he was helping, he wasn't responsible for it, and then that's all they have. So if they're dedicated to doing election stuff, then there's nobody in the IT department.
So I'm saying, I don't know, do we have a choice?
I mean, what is the other choice?
Didn't we lose an employee in IT?
Yes, yes.
So we're down one, so now we just have, how many people do we have?
Our IT, Michelle, is going to be coding the ballots, just like we always have. Our IT staff's still going to be there in the night election to go to troubleshoot, the day election to go to troubleshoot.
But when I did this contract, I paid Michelle separately.
I understand that.
She did not do it on IT time, okay?
So you think, so you think our IT guys can do it all?
They have in the past, you know, and we're shorthanded now.
Which, which past?
I know this one election, yeah.
Has he done the last?
He hasn't seen one yet.
That's what I'm saying.
There, I don't need to argue, man, you're not even in this. Yeah, you're not, so...
But the new guy, the guy that is the head of the IT now, he has never even looked at an election.
I agree. Ms. Becky, I'm not saying this election, he would not be a follow-on, you know? I get it. Marcus wasn't here very shortly either, and he caught on pretty quick.
I think he had a good pulse of it when he got done.
Have we talked, have we talked to the new IT guy, see if he could handle it?
Well, we're extremely sure... Well, we're extremely shorthanded, I think we lost one more, so...
I know, that's what we're down to.
That's what, that's what I just asked Laura, we, how many do we have over there right now?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. You've got, you've got Scott, you've got Brett, and you've got Michelle.
Two days, one.
Tyler just left about last week, two weeks...
And when Marcus did it, Jay, Marcus did not do it the first time he was there, he came and shadowed us and watched us do it, and then the next time he did it.
Right.
You know, so like I said, this, this guy has not had an opportunity to shadow any of this stuff.
And Tyler was...
I think we hired him, I think we hired him right before the general election, didn't we? Like October? Right before the, I mean, somewhere in the middle of, two weeks out. I don't even know if you got to see the election. No, no, we hired this guy in October.
Oh, this guy, you're talking about?
Yeah, the IT guy.
I didn't think he had any experience.
Because Marcus was ready to run it in November, and then we hired him in late October for the November general election.
I'll be honest, I don't even know if he was here before the election.
I don't either.
And if he was, I think, I think Marcus came back to help.
Yeah, Marcus helped with it.
That's why when we discussed this last, you know, I, I suggested that maybe we should bring in, you know, somebody, but we managed to get through it just fine. You know, I thought we would need Hart here for some backup during the last election. But luckily, you know, I'm on my hard work.
Okay, I did the last election, and y'all, y'all said that you were pulling in Hart, and I said, I didn't see any sense in paying Hart to come in if you were paying me to do it, so, so y'all didn't pay Hart to come in.
Well, I mean, we got lucky, we didn't have any hiccups this time, but the time before, you know, Hart wasn't here, Marcus bailed us out, just like all the other times, our IT director, you know, there's little things that go wrong, calculations, you know, so...
I didn't, I mean, I'm sorry, but I didn't realize that there were any hiccups. The only hiccups were at the polls, the precinct workers didn't give out the correct ballots.
I'm not talking about...
But as far as the machines, they all worked correctly.
There was, there definitely was.
Oh, what, what is it dealing with Hart? Are we still under some kind of, oh, we, we're done, we got to contract those guys out to come back Hart?
We have to pay them, anything they do, we got to pay them.
We're outside that number. Yeah, but that's not a troubleshooting deal, that's not a troubleshooting thing.
Kind of, to kind of put a bow on the discussion and maybe move us along, this is the only discussion today, unless y'all are interested in taking some sort of action today, it's not up for action today. We would like to go ahead and get it put to bed as it relates, obviously, because you got to march a primary that's coming up in federal.
We saw it absentee voting Monday.
Yeah, they're voting right now.
I think... Ms. Becky, how are we going to deal with the night of the election, like, who's going to take up all those boxes and deliver them back over to the warehouse?
Okay, the sheriff's department does that, that's already, that's, the election commissioners handle that part of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to involve the election commissioners, there's got to be a...
I want them to come, I want them to come Monday.
Yeah, it's not that they're...
I'm not sure if they're aware of any of this right here, I think they need to know about it.
The, the election commissioners have never, ever been involved with the LNA testing, the programming, getting the ballots. Now, they order the ballots, but somebody has to prepare the ballots, okay? So the election commissioners still have a lot of stuff to do.
That's correct.
They, they, they still have all their regular stuff to do.
Have to get all the poll workers, they have to train all the poll workers, they have to...
They, they still have a lot of stuff to do.
Be available and oversee the actual conduct of the election, the, the boxes, the packaging, dealing with poll managers with respect to distribution, all of that is still election commissioner responsibility.
Even when the IT department handled the programming and the LNA testing and stuff like that, even when they did that, the election commissioners still have all their stuff to do. What I propose and does not have anything at all to do with taking away or adding anything to the election commissioners.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying it'd be good for them to be here, so everybody on the same page.
Just bring them in Monday, let, I mean, let them have an opportunity to come and give us advice, and we can digest this over the weekend.
And, and bring our IT guys in.
Yeah, you got to do, bring them all.
Bring both of them, some of the guns in here.
Yeah.
I mean, because they don't have any, the problem is, we're at a point where she's already doing absentee voting, the elections aren't even on.
I'm not talking about this specific election, you know, I'm talking about how we going to operate going forward, you know?
Well, and that's why he needs to be involved, the IT guy.
I think the election commissioners need to know about this now, don't you think?
Yeah, obviously, I mean, you know...
But I think in the past, they've been heard of that.
In the same election cycle, where we got presidential election that starts in five weeks and it goes till next November, I don't want to do it halfway and say, okay, you're done, we figured it out. Whatever we do, I would like to make it this cycle.
Well, have them come in here Monday.
And then if that, you know, and during that time, we can say, this, we, we've got this other plan, and at the end of that cycle, put it in place.
All right.
Have them come in here Monday.
In 2019, okay, 2018 I did the elections, and 2000, with the understanding that when the office got ready, the IT department did it. So the IT department did the first election that we had in 2019.
Yeah, I know that, but I just said, for the actual working day, I think they didn't know before.
Then Marcus left, so y'all came to me and asked me if I was really willing to do it because the IT person was no longer here. So that's why I did it. Was because IT cannot do it.
This has always been a moving target, really. I mean, heck, I mean...
And I promise you, it makes no difference to me, it's a lot, lot more work for me to do it.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure on election day, and like I said, you talk about hiccups, but I promise you, I didn't hear about any hiccups with the machines.
No, no, I was talking about the, the, the software on the server tabulating the votes.
There wasn't even any hiccups with that.
I think you talked Marcus, he did, wasn't it?
It was like two years, didn't it?
Yeah, it wasn't last year. Okay, I thought you were saying last year, I knew that there wasn't any hiccup last year. But anyway, like I said, I'm just, I just need to know as soon as I can because there's a lot of work behind the scenes that has to be done to get ready for an election.
Hopefully, we can let you know Monday.
Yeah, and as far as this maintenance agreement, you know, is concerned, that certainly makes no difference. I just was trying to fill a gap so that there would be a smoother process for getting things done.
I love it, sounds great to me, I like that part.
All right.
So who notifies the election commissioners to come Monday?
Your staff.
If you need IT, bring them in here too. IT needs to be...
Well, I think IT needs to be here too.
That's what I said, bring them all.
Or both them and a half, bring them all in.
Bring, yeah, the whole group.
It's not going to fill up a lot of chairs.
All right, Ms. Laura, I think you're up.
I have is authorization to execute an amended agreement with, between Rankin County and Blue Cross. There were some new federal guidelines that came out, and the responsibility is on Blue Cross for the obligations. It does not result in any additional cost or obligations to us, but I just need authority to sign that new agreement.
All right, have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Steve, you in a discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, ayes have it.
Do y'all have any questions about the upcoming agenda?
Hey, I do, I'm glad you had, I got something on consent. Um, I got to find it, I don't have a hard copy of consent, but I saw it on the digital copy. I need to, uh, get the consent. No, it's a, um, I got, that's one of me. I think it's, let me find it on the hard copy, just a second. I got, I got, I got to get to consent, I'm sorry.
Hey, Mike, did you have that?
No, go ahead, you're good, you're good.
Well, I was asking for this meeting, do we have, did we approve, was it on our, we didn't have consent today, did we?
No.
We need to approve a PO to be issued for some fencing to go up.
I've got it on the consent to move money to go in the correct line item, there was no funds in there, but I've got it on here too.
Can we do that today?
Well, I can't, I can go ahead and give her the authority to, if y'all are going to approve this, y'all don't have a problem, you're going to approve it, because it'll just be an amendment to make sure the money is in that line item.
Yeah. Y'all mind?
What fencing is?
It's, uh, where we had a, that colder blowout, and we should have done, put the fence up three months ago, so, yeah, so how do we need to do it?
If you'd like to, we could add it to today.
It's two sixteen league fence on each side of the road that goes over a bridge.
Jay, if you'd like, we could add it today under additional business, we could remove it off of the consent, and we can add it here, and I can get, so I can get her going on it?
Yeah, y'all mind?
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
All right.
It makes to add it.
All right. Yeah, so motion by Daniel, second by Steve, that is the item, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it now.
Motion for...
Motion approved by Daniel, second by Steve, you in a discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I think it's like a thousand dollars, something like that.
Twelve, yeah, it's not much, I've got, I'll take care of it.
All right, the question I had was on, on K. Item K. For David Hicks, an ADC officer, to attend a CPR certification for community rescue level for BLS healthcare provider for four hundred dollars in Gulfport. What is that?
That is, that came from Barry Bong yesterday, for one of his detention officers, detention officers that has to have a certification. I got the back of it right here.
Right, I guess my...
He just, that's all I know about it.
I mean, that's a thousand dollars for a CPR class?
It's two of them, it's the first level and then the other level, that's optional, that's right here.
All right.
He gave me some back.
That's all I can tell you, it came through the request.
I was just trying to figure out that, I don't know, that's just a lot of money for CPR class, when they're twenty-five. We don't teach it, but I mean, there's people...
We have it local, I think.
Well, I, well, I guess my thing is, Grantham can do it. At ELC, word, right? Now, you're talking about a CPR certification and community rescue level for BLS healthcare provider, which is just adult, child, and infant CPR, BLS healthcare provider, why are we going to Gulfport for, because you're talking about four hundred dollars for the course, and then travel related expenses, so you're going to spend another couple, three hundred, so you're seven hundred and fifty dollars for a BLS healthcare provider, word? Not that you put in, but I'm just saying, I guess my question between now and Monday, can we talk with Grantham, see if he can teach us?
This almost, just for face value, looking at it, this almost has the appearance of him being certified as a...
Instructor?
CPR instructor, not necessarily taking the class.
Well, that, that makes more sense to me, if it's an instructor class, right?
To teach CPR, it's like twenty-five bucks.
I'll check them out.
It makes me think this is more of an instructor class so that he can take care of, because they've got requirements for the jail and the JDC, that always means you have to have CPR.
I think it's clarity for the, for Monday game.
I would almost say this is probably instructor class.
It is, you're right, it says right here, it's instructor manuals, never mind.
Okay.
It's for the manuals and the DVD, so it's not a class for four hundred dollars. He's getting the instructor manuals and DVDs to his house, I got, I'm good, I'm totally good. That's what it is, that's what the email said, that's right. Can we put that in the consent, just for the wording side, just so we clear that up?
Yes, we can.
Because, because looking at it outside, it just looks...
We'll change it.
Like we're paying seven hundred dollars for a forty dollar class.
We'll change it.
We can do that, I mean, it's government.
What it said in here was...
That last sentence, that last sentence, where it says it's a instructor class with curriculum, that's what he's paying for, the curriculum, so that's, that's, I'm good.
We'll get that in there.
All right, anybody else?
No.
Heck, we done then, huh?
Additional business.
I have a, one more thing, yeah.
I have something on additional business too, go ahead.
I do too, whenever somebody wants to get done.
Well, let's take, first item is actually on.
Yeah.
I guess the reason why Mike stuck around, I'm sorry.
No, I, I've, I've been trying to make my rounds to different boards, new boards starting, but I do want to thank you all for your support of CMPD, and I just happened to see that this item was on there about the board appointments, so I am here, and I stuck around to make sure there was no question about those appointments and what positions they entail and the various committees that are affected by it, so...
So we have two board members that currently serve on, or we did, Phil Motley, on the MPO and the board directors?
All right, to, to give you all some background, board of directors, you have a county official, one of you supervisors, you have a business industry rep, which can be a board supervisor, Jared's been serving in that capacity, or someone else. And then we have a minority representative, which Walter Redd has served for a number of years, and is on our steering committee as well. So that's the board of directors. The county official that's on the board of directors automatically serves on the MPO, which is the transportation component of our operation. The county official that, that you choose would automatically be on there, as well as the minority representative, and then you have a second choice, the county administrator or a county official. So, in, in the case of Rankin, Madison, and Hines, they have all in the past chosen to make a second supervisor, that MPO representative.
So we could actually have a member of board supervisors get served on the board directors, but not serve on the MPO.
Yep, if he was in that position as a business and industry, and then you had somebody else, I think that would...
I'm just asking, we've never done that before, I'm just curious. I know there's a lot of interest in serving this time of more than two pieces, so I was just trying to see if there was a way we could all meet in the middle and, you know...
Yeah, you know, like I said, you have the, you have the county official, the business industry rep, you could essentially have two supervisors.
And the one that's on the board directors, that's the...
And then the, the MPO, that's the, that's the board of directors.
Yeah.
Then the MPO, you ha, you have basically two county supervisors who can serve on the MPO, along with the minority representative Walter Redd, he serves on the MPO as well.
So basically, one of the supervisors that's on the, the board directors automatically serves on the MPO.
That's correct.
That's the county official.
That's the county official.
That's the one, that's the one I've been serving on.
No, you've been serving under the...
No, Bob, Bob was the county official in the past, you were the business rep.
That's right. I'd like to continue, I've enjoyed this, I would like to continue. I see what Jay's saying, if you, I don't know, can we work it where, uh, three?
I would like the county official to take Bob's place. I would like to take Bob's place.
I'm good.
See, I, I don't care anything about serving on board directors, but I want to be on the MPO board, mainly because I think it's important we have somebody there that's going to stay on top of what's going on.
Who are you suggesting that be?
Me.
Oh.
Of, of course.
I'm going to make it easy on you, I don't want them, I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, that just makes it...
I'm you, I, I got enough to learn.
I say y'all three play rock, paper, scissors.
Well, let me, let me say this, Jared...
Make it easy.
As business rep, you could be on the board of directors, they would have to make you the secondary supervisor for the MPO, but, you know, if Steve has made the county official, then he would be on both.
He'd take Bob's place.
Right. And, and do we have on there for workforce?
I think, you know, we got another round of funds coming through now.
Okay, good, good, I was going to say, that's the third committee that we need, yeah.
I would come to some meetings with you, but if you, if you make, I mean, you don't...
Jared, you don't want to give up, man, let somebody else serve?
Not really, I've enjoyed doing that.
I gave up, let Bob serve last time, man, you know, so you don't have to stay on it all the time.
I know. I, I'd rather stay on it though.
Alright, we're not making motions and voting on anything right now, but I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna defer to Jay.
Yeah, and, and my, my purpose is just to help you understand those slots, whoever y'all choose we work with and, uh, be happy to.
Alright.
Uh, but like I say, we, uh, we need to get those.
When's the first meeting?
Well, that's what I was gonna tell you, uh, we need to get those because, uh, the M P O is February twelfth.
Oh, wow.
So it's coming up. We actually sent out the notice yesterday, started sending that out, so as soon as y'all make a decision on it, we'd like to go ahead and send that to who you appoint.
Y'all talk about it over the weekend, and let's be prepared to act on Monday?
Yeah. And, and then the board of directors will be March eleventh.
Alright.
So, those are coming up. But thank y'all very much for all you do, and, uh, I, I'm glad to know that y'all are, are fighting over wanting to be on the, on the board of directors, so.
Look, don't lose love for me, just don't.
Even though Daniel said, you know, he really didn't worry about it.
We're working in county anyway.
I think Brad may be interested.
Won't be long, we'll be about ten months, no, about ten months. We, uh, we're a little setback with the weather right now.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We're about, almost a month behind.
Well, we're glad you chose to move to Rankin County anyway.
Well, we are, we got a lot of employees that are very excited about moving, so, and we'll have a nice grand opening one time.
Alright, Mike.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a couple people.
Yeah, I got, I got something, um, and Mike, you can jump in here. Uh, actually Brad came up with this idea, and, uh, I think it's a good idea, and the, the fire station that we're building right now, uh, Southwest, you know, we're, we're at a good point that this could happen. He was talking about on these outer line fire stations, if we could put something that's kinda like a, I don't wanna use the word safe room, but it would be kinda like a safe room, which is like inside where you're gonna build a break room, bath, kitchen. If that wasn't, right now is a perfect time, we could do like a, um.
Cinder block.
Cinder block, um, allow, you know, and anyway, you make provisions in the concrete right now, cinder block, you're not talking about hardly any, um, very little additional expense, but it would give you a cinder block wall inside the building and still serve as everything was potentially planned on being served for, but in the event there was some problem, but you know, those guys, they're very vulnerable sitting in a tin can, plus it, you know, who knows?
Open it up to the.
Public.
Public.
If, if, if it needed to be.
Yep, if you had a, I mean, I think if we built it, it'd have to be available to the public.
Right.
And you had to staff it, I mean, you had to put somebody there.
Well, I mean, one of the volunteers would be there.
You gotta have somebody there if you're gonna open it up.
Yep.
But, um, it'd just be a perfect time to do it. Brad, he said something about it, and I thought, that's a great idea, and right now, uh, I think we're gonna come in under the money anyway on this, uh, building we're building, so it would still be within the, uh.
Budget, you gonna come in under what?
Huh?
What are you gonna come in under?
What do you mean come in under?
The, what's that amount?
Uh, I ain't got it figured out, but I, I've seen what we have, where we are now, we're, we're way under the, uh, two hundred, two hundred and fifty. Yeah, we're under that now. And, uh, I think, I don't think it's gonna cost hardly anything. I can find, get some ideas.
You'd have to pay somebody to lay blocks.
Well, you're gonna lay cinder blocks and you're gonna fill.
And maybe you'll have to do some infrastructure to the roof on.
No, just, yeah, what you do, I've done these before, I've done them before for people to have in homes, and, uh, you lay the cinder blocks, and, um, they're, they get rebar through them, then they fill with concrete and they have, uh, then you build a reinforced, in this particular case, they, more than one, they built a reinforced steel box that's in set, on there in sections. So it protects.
Underneath your tin building, that would be your ceiling.
Right, just like this is your ceiling, and then your roots on up above.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it's, uh, very secure that way, and, and if it's very long, you just build it in sections, and you just set them on, they're bolted down on top.
Yep.
I think, and I'm not real sure, Warwick can probably straighten me out on the whole thing, that if you're gonna make it a community shelter, not an individual private shelter,
Uh-huh.
there may be different regulations that go into.
Well, that's, that's what I asked him to ask, look into, yeah.
A D A approved.
Well, I mean, if, if, if you're gonna declare it a safe room, not for a private house or home, you can make whatever you want to, what you feel safe, and those things aren't, but there are regulations on safe rooms if you're gonna put the general public into it.
I've asked him to look into.
Especially if, if you're gonna have it funded by the federal government, you've got to follow in their guidelines. You have to do that. As far as something that the county owns, and, and I'm no juris doctor by any means, um, it's something that the county, you like that, didn't you? That the county owns and builds themselves. Mr. Morrison and I were speaking about this, and, and both of us were, were leaning away from calling it a safe room, more of a, uh, if, if you decided to do this, more of a substantial structure, uh, that is obviously safer than a mobile home or a, uh, a stick-built home or something like that. It's, it's more of a substantial structure, not necessarily a safe room, uh, just to possibly get away from all the litigation litigiousness and things of that nature, so.
I was gonna buy, yes. We, uh, I don't know if we got any specific policies that address how the volunteer fire departments will operate as it relates to security and safety inside the facility, the facility that they, you know, they're gonna obviously declare that to be the volunteer fire department facility, even if the county can't even build, okay? So I think we probably need to discuss with, in particular, this volunteer fire department, and just make sure that we understand, generally speaking.
Which is absolutely impossible, especially when you're not even counting the weekend.
Right.
We've got a true safety issue going on right now at that intersection, because I can't get a contractor to finish his job, and I've had all I can take of it. The residents have all I can take of it, it's an absolute safety concern on what we've got in that intersection. I don't have the right solution, I don't know if the right solution is to close the intersection down and just sit back and wait till August of twenty twenty-five, when the contractor comes back to finish the job? I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, but we have to take some kind of action to put whatever kind of pressure we can on this contractor to get out there and finish this job. Not having a worker on site since November twenty-seventh is the most asinine thing I've ever heard in my life. Why you don't come back after these larders? We've had over twenty inches of rain since December fifteenth, and nobody comes out there to see what's washed out and tore up, so when that happens, all these vehicles drive through here, they get their frames tore up, they get tires blown out, they're having to tow vehicles.
Are you sure about that?
I'm sure about it.
Yeah, that no one's been on site since then?
I'm telling you what our engineers reported back to us. So, the last official date on the site's November twenty-seventh, so I don't know what today's date is.
Who's contractor?
Hemphill Construction is our contractor. It's a good question. So, Mr. Slade, if you can lead me down.
Hey, nobody, nobody's been on site.
Is that not crazy?
Yeah.
Uh, that's really odd too.
Yeah, it's more, yeah, you're right.
Well.
So, I'm, I'm up here on my, on my dying breath, begging for help somehow, to motivate our people to get this job finished, so.
What's the holdup on getting it done? I mean, is it, they call it weather?
Well, you know, the way these contracts come out, this is one of these programs that are.
Yeah, but I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, hang on, they only have so many days per month that they, they're supposed to work. Like, for example, the month of February, they're supposed to work for five days. That's crazy.
Period?
Yeah, yeah, they go back to the month of January. M dot has this thing padded so well that they only have to work so many days a month, and you can't count the weekends.
Okay, it's gone through M dot.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, and, and it's not, it's not us, to the same point, it's M dot's regulations that fall underneath these projects that we get through.
Now, we're getting somewhere.
So my point is, M dot has created this blanket around them.
Yep.
That's giving them the padding and all these days, and it's absolutely crazy.
Now, we're getting somewhere.
And you go back and, and you look at the guidelines they have on these contractors, they're in their favor.
What they lack right now, what, is the road torn up?
Absolutely, it's torn up.
Okay.
And, and squeezed down to one lane.
Okay.
So they've gotta go in and add an additional pipe work, I think is the right wording, Mike, on an addition, on one of the lanes that's gotta happen. They, they've got an area on Spill.
Change order, or is that?
No, 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 it's part of it. We hadn't changed nothing.
I mean, the pipe was.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and another area on Spillway Road, our thoughts were this was done in October. Our thoughts were this was done by Thanksgiving. We couldn't wait any longer, so when we had the weather, we came in and redid Spillway Road, striped it, uh, put reflective lights on it, got it all cleaned up, but the one area that's not finished is that one lane that they've added on that far north side of Spillway Road. They could go in and finish that job, but it's not happening. So what happens is they come across our brand-new paved roads, drop down into a little gully, blow back up into the neighborhoods, front ends of vehicles. It, it's an absolute disgrace that we've got a project going on in Rankin County that we go two months without anybody showing up, and they have no plans on showing up. The next step on, on the agreement was, hey, we're gonna come back in on February fourth or fifth and add a traffic light. Now, adding the traffic light comes in, they gotta go do posts or holes, let those cure, that draws it back out, and then they put up some streetlights. All this being said, now you've got ten to fifteen days it has to be, or needed, to fix these lanes up.
What can we do if it's M dot?
Yeah, so, let's ta- let's talk about a big picture perspective here that maybe will help if somebody's looking at the tape and wants to know what in the world's going on with this. Here's the big picture. Uh, in order to get access to seventy-five percent of the cost of this project, we gotta get in bed with M dot. We, if we want the funding, we gotta play by their rules.
Mm-hmm.
What is the issue here? The county does not in fact control exclusively the operation of this contract. M dot gets to set the rules. Can I tell you this? Road builders have a powerful lobby, and they have set it up so that through the M dot rules, there's three months in the year where regardless of how many days they're out there working, they can only be charged for a specified number of days.
December, January, February?
In the, in that three-month time period, December, January, and February, I think we get to charge the contractor about fourteen days, maybe fifteen days, in that neighborhood. If they work for ninety of that, they get charged for fifteen. What that means is that when you look at the total number of days, and by the way, M dot runs contracts on what's called a work day term, the number of working days, doesn't matter how many calendar days, you count the number of working days, and then they tell you, you get this many working days per month, and they have a, they have a list for each month, how many working days is included. The most we can charge them for, the best weather we have.
So the contractor knows it, right? So they know it, and they get behind on their project or whatever, so they know, if I don't get this stuff finished by November, it's not really a big deal, because I'm fixing to get massaged by M dot that I don't have to do anything for the next three months.
I don't know the answer, was, was it going through M dot?
The, the problem is, it's not a good answer for the county standpoint.
And here's the point that Daniel is frustrated about. As we sit here right now, this contractor is not in default under the contract as it relates to the term length.
I see that.
What we are asserting and, and what has been clearly communicated is that the contractor has not protected the site and kept it safe to the motoring public. We make that argument all day long, but until there's an agreement about that, or until a court says that's the fact, we don't know whether this contractor's in default or not. That's a stretch for us to try to make that claim. At the moment, we know that we can demonstrate that at least three different individuals have torn the car up.
Yeah, and, and, and on top of that, we've got work order after work order set up and done by our road department, going out there trying to patch this area up, just to keep cars where they could drive on the whole deal. It, it's, our costs are just going.
So here's the challenge that we have.
We're, we're losing money, the company's losing money, cause they can't get the project fixed.
Correct. The challenge that we have is that if we tell them, alright, y'all have got to get out there, and you've got to finish this job, they're going to counter back to us and say, we still have time under the contract to get it done, and the weather does not in fact promote us going out there right now. Why? Because the minute we stick a backhoe in the ground, we got a swimming hole.
Mm-hmm.
So if y'all want us to go out there and finish it, then you have to, you've got to talk to us, and we've got to agree that we're not gonna be responsible for the condition of this road when we get finished, cause you're making us work in a swimming hole, and you know it, and we know it, and we're telling you, we need a period of time where it's dry, where we can get in there and finish. We've discussed the possibility, and this is still a work in process, guys.
Let me ask you this, uh, Daniel, if, okay, obviously they can't work with, with soup.
And I agree with it.
If something was up to, uh, what, what do you, a barricade, or, or what?
Well, well, there's barricades everywhere up there right now, so I, I guess the main, the part that just got me the most frustrated of them all is that I get it, you're not gonna go out there and put your equipment in there and finish the job, but you should have people on site trying to make that road as drivable as possible for the safety of the people that live out there.
Yes.
That's my full argument.
What needs to be done to make it drivable? Yeah, I mean.
Well, I would, I would, I would encourage them to show up out there and look and see. Maybe it's where you add a couple layers of asphalt down in certain spots. Maybe our road department don't have to go in there and babysit that job site that they're under contract to be able to perform, get it done. Is it, should they go in, is there parts of it that they could button up and finish to make the, the, the area accessible?
Yeah.
Yes, there is, but they don't know, because they haven't been out there since twenty-seventh November.
Well, have we communicated with them lately?
Yes.
Yes, we've, we've had discussions.
So, do you express our desire to have them out there and do a little work?
Yes.
What is their response?
I mean, it's, the work that they, the main work that they have left to do is, um, they've still got some undercut dig out on a lane in both directions, so it's, that, that's their concern, that's what they're saying they need the ten, the ten to fourteen day window to do, cause when you get it dug out, you got a swimming pool. And what they, they suffered through this a little bit on the first two lanes that they dug out, they'd get it ready up to clay gravel and it rained, now they gotta plow the clay gravel up. Well, they're working in a very confined area, cause it's tight out there and there's, I don't know the exact car count, there's a lot of traffic out there.
M dot says it's twenty-seven thousand a day.
So the issue, what we've been talking to them about lately, I think that's where Craig was fixing to head, was trying to button up some of the things that can be. Spillway, the, the initial turn lane, it could be overlaid now. The issue is, we can't tell the contractor how to execute his work, and his plan, when they made it clear, was to bring the paving guy back out there one more time and do it all. Pay the, the, the turn lanes and pay the, the new lanes on, on North Shore. So, uh, what the contractor looks at is, there's an additional expense there. Uh, now, we've done in the past on contracts, and, uh, you know, there's so much M dot money in this, so any additional might fall solely on the county, cause I don't know if there's any more, uh, federal funds available, but there are times when contracts go into a different part of the year where you have to make adjustments. I mean, nobody thought, as Daniel has well stated, nobody thought this contract was gonna be going in January, February, and December. So, there may be things, and that's what we've been looking at, is potentially coming in and putting part of the asphalt down, uh, on what can be, and getting, at least in one direction, getting both lanes opened back up until the contractor can, so, so we've relieved some of the traffic, uh, until the contractor can get his window, uh, which he still has contract time left to do, uh, where he can get his window to complete the project. So, but there are additional costs with that, that would be associated with him mobilizing twice, uh, possibly having to add a little bit of asphalt that, that may get dug back up, and there, there's some, there's some additional costs in there that, uh, to my knowledge, we don't have any way to force the contractor to do that.
And, and, and my argument is that the contractor put themselves in their position on this. This, this stuff could have been done and buttoned down, or maintained easily throughout, if you're not gonna work for two or three months at a spot, I get it, that's your right and your prerogative, but you should at least have some oversight, because you've got that whole area filleted like a fish, and cars going through, just getting tore up.
Somebody should be there.
Without question.
Can I stress what Daniel just said and put a little more meat on it for you? I don't believe that this contractor will be able to argue that they didn't mishandle some scheduling and some work back in August and September, when we had some really good weather?
No, I know.
Y'all remember that?
I remember you talking about that, yeah.
They chose, they made a business decision to be elsewhere doing other work, and they left August and September, they left us, uh, our project, and they left it high and dry. So they are now paying a very high price for that decision, not to do that work.
They're really not paying it, we are.
Correct, correct.
Well, but, but, but having said that, they're losing, they're losing money not closing this project out. I mean, this should have been done.
Yeah, when is the deadline?
When is the deadline?
I don't know.
It's a good question.
I don't know.
In a working day contract, there is no deadline, because, because it's, it's based on when you can charge them a day. So right now, at, at the end of January, they're at ninety days of a hundred and eighteen day working day contract, so.
But the, but the most they can move is in February, it's five, no matter what happens. If, if it doesn't rain for the entire month of February and it's just pristine, five days is all they can be charged on to do. It's the most craziest thing of, of, of padding a contractor's tail, as I've ever seen in my life, the regulations that comes through the M dot side of it.
They can choose, because M dot lets them, because the state legislature lets M dot let them, they can choose to work zero days in February, and the most we can charge them is five days.
Same, same, same situation in January, same situation in December.
That's correct.
So they know it coming into it, so it doesn't matter in their mind.
But all that being said, that's really, other than the little bitty things, there's really nothing we can do.
Well, here's, here is what is under discussion.
Yeah.
A work in process in need of some feedback from this board. There is the possibility that the contractor could go back out there, I'm gonna restate what Tim said, but I'm not gonna be able to engineer it properly, to do a button-up process, essentially to make it so that it is relatively safe and more open to traffic flow. I'm not gonna hazard to suggest that it will be completely safe.
No.
But at least mobilize their asphalt contractor to go out and to finish Spillway, and to button up that portion of the causeway that is currently torn, slammed.
How long, how long, bigger areas?
What, and then they come back and tear it all out in good weather?
Correct.
Well.
Not all of it, obviously, Spillway part of it's just finished.
No, they're, they're, they wouldn't have to tear out all the, I think all of the asphalt, I believe, that would be placed now would, would be able to stay.
How, what kind of this area, area are we talking about?
Jared, we've already got a potential cost on it, if that's, if that would be helpful.
One, one area is that stretch on Spillway, say from Hugh Ward to Spillway Road, that lane, it's finished. Just pay a bit.
The, the pencil sharpening number, and we gotta be really careful, because this is not, this is nothing more than an estimate. I'm trying to be very careful with this.
Yeah.
At the moment, the estimate is an additional twenty-four thousand, is what you're looking at.
Oh, that's like twenty-four thousand dollars, we need to done, done it.
Yeah.
I looked at it.
Soon as possible.
Yesterday, and I couldn't believe that, because I had people, I spoke at a youth deal, and one of the youths stood up, wanted to know, why have they not worked on this road for two months? And what are y'all gonna do about it? I said, ma'am, that is not my dead knowledge.
Hey, I said the same thing. It wasn't my district, too. I said the same thing. But, but, and everybody needs to understand, this isn't the county's fault this happened. We awarded a bid in good faith to a contractor, which we'll learn as that process comes back up again.
Yeah, next time, we just don't need to bid that late.
Hundred percent we. So, uh, we, we'll deal with that on the back end. The problem is, what can we do to make this thing better for the people that live out there? The problem is, everybody in this community believes that the five of us is responsible for not doing any work. They don't know it's a contractor. They think it's the county doing the work.
They don't even know it's them.
Not five. Yeah, because I don't live out here. I live in, I live in, uh, Madison.
Hey, what, what, uh, of the twenty-four thousand dollars worth, what would have to be torn back up?
Literally, I, I mean, I'll speak up. We met out there the other day, Jerry.
Who did, you, we?
Me and Hemp Hill and a representative of engineering service. I mean, actually what we're laying down, we're gonna, we're asking them to mill out a little bit deeper, put like what we call a wearing surface down, like a subdivision would be, be temporary strike. And then we'll have to come back and put, then they have to come back and put another inch and a half of asphalt over that for the permanent strip and, and, and the surface. That's where the extra cost is. So we don't have to tear up no asphalt. I don't think we had to tear up any asphalt.
Who'd you meet, who's the, uh, who'd you meet with out there, Hemp Hill?
I, we, the owner all the way down to their project manager.
Well, you didn't meet the owner?
Oh, yes, sir.
Owner?
The owner.
Richard, Richard came out.
Yes, sir.
So they're willing to do it.
So what, what do they agree to do?
Well, they haven't really agreed anything. They, they, they agreed to go and do some work. But what they're saying is, if we're gonna do it, the county's gonna have to pay an extra, the county's gonna have to pay for the additional button-ups is, is the issue.
Well, keep in mind that what Tim said was, it's not yet completely determined whether the county will bear all of that because there could possibly be some relief in the actual federal component of this that's coming through MDOT. There may be some.
Kind of action.
I think, I think, I think we can take action Monday, but I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of this going into it because obviously we've had rain again and whatever. Harrison's gonna be out there trying to clean the thing up a little bit for drivable sake on the same point. But we've got a major issue, I want to make sure everybody understands it, that it's a, it's a public mess.
You know the project manager's name?
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I got one thing, uh, Tim with.
No, I, I was just gonna a little bit further explain. The, the asphalt that's going down, we'll end up with more asphalt because we have to mill it down to get it in there now and do it in two layers. So actually you'll end up with a better structural number on your asphalt because you'll have more asphalt out there. So the money is not just, in, in my opinion, totally, uh.
Right. Lost.
I just, I wanted to put that out there for thought, so we come into Monday, that we can have something, maybe Ms. Laura on the agenda to discuss the Hemp Hill project again and, uh, and go from there. I just wanted to start that conversation.
You'll have more structure out there when you get through with the project.
And in the meantime, the streetlight part of this project is, as we understand it, is moving forward. It, it's not impeded by any of these discussions that we're talking about. So that part of the project should continue. And FYI, that's a separate subcontractor under the Hemp Hill, uh, contract. So it's, uh, hopefully that part of this project will go more smoothly, okay? So we'll talk about it on Monday.
Thank you, Jay.
Well, we got one thing, um, went out to our new tax collector, I hate Caroline, I walked out, our new tax collector office the other day to pay some tags, and there's this cord that's running on the ground inside conduit. The ladies are, yeah, the ladies are tripping on it. It's stupid that it's even there. I don't even know how it passed.
What's it going through?
Their counter. That counter is out front.
Yeah.
And what's stupid about it, there's a drop coming from the drop seat, you know?
Yeah.
And, and so anyway, to get to the long and short of it, I called our IT department, make sure it wasn't us who did that. And it was not. Gonna find out, it's the power that goes across there. But the sad thing is, the contractor did it at the guidance of our elected official. So we still need to get it moved. We're going to pay to get it done.
Another bite in the butt.
Who said put the cable in?
Judy. As a matter of fact, she argued down our contractor, JSI, and wanted them also to run the network cable on the floor. And they went ahead and put the drop down.
Yeah, what's it?
Whatever it is, to move that little power cable over the top, they'll have to do a new drop, you know, five hundred bucks maybe.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion out of that, too.
Well, I don't even know, do we have to? Can we just tell our maintenance guy to go do it?
I mean, no, I mean, here's my thing, is if one of our officials said for us, for them to do it, we don't have a choice at that point.
Right.
I mean, again, it's just rogue activities out there.
Yeah, they don't wanna go in there again because that's, told them to do a whole lot of things, but we can't be that way.
But, but once I, yeah, that's right. Once our, once our folks. I got a motion to adjourn.
They don't have the authority to be telling them that, that's what's.
We have an executive. Do we have need for executive?
All right, have a motion to adjourn.
Tenure.
I'm waiting.
Motion by Daniel to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Steve, gonna discuss it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Name.
Hi, uh.
Yeah, I want them to move next to me. Yeah, and that other one, there's an oil can out there. Yeah, they, so, they, these two things we think, Jerry, we need to be ready. That, that, I don't see them fixing that yard.
Thank y'all.